Good morning. I'd like to call Lane County Board of Commissioners to order. Today is Wednesday, March 20th, or May 20th, sorry. And this morning, we have a work session with Health and Human Services on the Lane County Mental Health System. And I am going to turn it over to Alicia Hayes, but I will note for the record that Commissioner Parr is excused today.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Commissioners, for allowing us to come together with you in this work session on mental health and behavioral health. I have staff here that I'm going to ask introduce themselves, and Sophie, introduce yourself, your name, and what you do at mental health.
I'm Jeremy Zalbier, I'm a management analyst at Lane County Behavioral.
I'm Carla Rogers, I'm a clinical supervisor with Lane County Behavioral Health.
I'm Lisa Nichols, I'm an assistant director with Lane County Public Human Services.
Good morning, and Diana O'Gree, I'm a senior program services coordinator with Lane County Health and Human Services in the administration.
And I'm Kendra Baller, I'm also a program services coordinator with Lane County Public Human Services.
And I've done my ceremonial duties of introducing. I'm going to turn it over to Lisa, who will begin the presentation.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing us the time today to talk about our mental health system of care. So on our agenda today, we plan to cover two broad areas. So first, we'll provide an overview of Lane County's current mental health system, including the roles and responsibilities of those officers around this table, as well as looking at an overview of the residential and outpatient systems of care. Within that, we'll look at who the key players are, how the state, how the county intersects, as well as how our CCO interacts with these entities. And for the second portion of our presentation, we'd like to talk a little bit about some of the current system improvement projects that are happening in our county. We have a multitude of projects and initiatives and the work that are positively contributing to our system and helping to advance the county's strategic plan around health and safety. So we'll highlight some of these for you, and then, of course, we'll give plenty of time at the end for questions and discussion. So to start with, what are our roles and responsibilities? So the Oregon Administrative Rules have designated the bodies that are responsible for the oversight of our local mental health system. Lane County Behavioral Health has been designated as the community mental health program, and we reside under the authority of the Board of County Commissioners, who are designated as the local mental health authority. Together, we're tasked with monitoring our system and ensuring that we're providing appropriate, accessible, coordinated, and effective mental health care to our community.
And we don't do that alone. The Oregon statutes require that each county and each local mental health authority have a mental health advisory committee. Your mental health advisory committee, these are the OAR purposes, but the purpose really is to advise you, the county commissioners, and the local mental health authority on community needs and priorities for mental health, developmental disabilities, and addiction services, including gambling. And they do that by reviewing the biennial mental health and addictions plan, assist in evaluation of proposals to provide services, and participate in the planning and evaluation process for community mental health, developmental disabilities, and addiction services. A recent example of that is last year, two years ago, you all had focus areas for our community health improvement plan, and your mental health advisory committee was instrumental in helping us develop specific priorities and specific actions around the behavioral health-related focus areas at this point. And I also want to thank you all over the past several years that I've been involved with the committee for your engagement with the members, with the committee, with the process. Thank you for that.
Next, I would like to share with you what our current structure is for the residential system of care. First, I'll tell you about how many facilities we have, and then I'll let you know what the role of the state is and what our role is. Currently, we have two secure residential treatment facilities, with one pending, which is the Heron Center, and I know that you're familiar with that situation. We have three residential treatment facilities, and those facilities have more than six people in the home. We have four residential treatment homes. Those are 20 beds with less than six people in the homes. And then we have 19 adult foster homes, which equals about 89 beds, and those are all based on level of care for the individuals that are living in the homes, around what their needs are. Currently, what the state's role is, is they are responsible for the licensing structure. What that means is that, wait a minute, let me slow down. What that means is the state's responsible for licensing, site inspections, and payments. The facilities need to apply for a license through the state, and based on the application, the state makes the determination on whether they're going to grant the license or whether they'll deny it. The state is the only entity that can revoke a facility's license for noncompliance, much like what's happened with the Heron Center. Licensing identifies the level of care and classification of that facility. The facilities then follow the Oregon Administrative Rules, Chapter 309, that are specific to that license. They're also responsible for site inspections. The state reviews facility every two years, and what those reviews consist of is checking the facility for health and safety. This includes the facility and the equipment. The state then completes chart reviews to ensure medication compliance and that the medication is being dispensed properly, and then they also review all the documentation as it relates to that. They're responsible for payments. The state with facility determines the payment structure and reimburses for services rendered either through the, either directly to the state or passed through the community mental health program. Now, what our responsibilities are, is we're responsible for monitoring the facilities by evaluating and reporting compliance to contractual and regulatory requirements for the state. We're responsible for the referrals that we receive, so we're pretty much the gift keeper. When somebody wants to refer to a facility, we say whether it's an appropriate referral or not. We're also responsible for the resident grievances. We're the decision-maker in that process, both for grievances and appeals. Also, we're responsible for variances. Anytime a facility would like a rural variance, they submit a paperwork to the county, and we either approve it or deny it. We're responsible for compliance and abuse investigations. They're connected by delegated authority, and recommendations were made.
So then moving into that outpatient system of care, Lane County does have a whole continuum of outpatient services. These include prevention efforts, peer-delivered services, integrated mental health and physical health supports, outpatient and intensive outpatient offerings. Our current environment hosts numerous providers, 40 of whom are contracted directly with either the CMHP, the Community Mental Health Program, or our CCO, and serve more than 7,000 adults annually. So much like the residential system, there are distinct roles for both the county, the CMHP, and the state in the outpatient system. So the role of the state focuses on regulatory compliance and the provision of funding. So the state retains responsibility for awarding certificates of approvals to outpatient programs, indicating their adherence to rules and regulation. The state also issues specific funding streams for dedicated areas, such as indigent funding, and they provide standards and guidance to the CMHPs and the utilization of these funds. In the CMHP role in the outpatient system, we are responsible to ensure the provision of a variety of services. These services can be provided either through direct provision by the CMHP or through contracting with another local mental health entity. Examples of services that we, as the CMHP, provide directly include several commitment services and protective services investigations. So these programs, as you know, represent significant contributions to the safety of individuals in our larger community, and as such, these core functions are best provided by the county, since we are the entity that's responsible to the community as a whole. For the other services that we do contract out, the CMHP is responsible to coordinate with the state to conduct reviews of our subcontractors, and we provide recommendation to the state on the issuance of the certificates of approvals. So how does our CCO fit into this mix? So Trillium Behavioral Health, which is also a division of Lane County Health and Human Services, most obviously is responsible for the payment of mental health services for its members, including the OHB population. However, in order to ensure that these services are high-quality and are cost-efficient, Trillium Behavioral Health takes on enough a number of other activities. These include coordinating cares for members, so assisting people with navigating the system and helping them access the appropriate level of care. TBH also helps individuals get to their appointments, so they help with transportation, and they complete conventional on all our providers, so ensuring that qualified professionals are available to help those that need it. Additionally, starting in 2017, payments for the residential system of care will shift under the oversight of Trillium Behavioral Health. So as you know, Lane County, like many other counties, has related some barriers and issues with our mental health system of care. We have encountered access issues, especially in our rural areas. We've had a lack of crisis in housing services. There's also been concerns about our residential system of care. To remove these barriers from the system, there are numerous system improvement efforts currently underway. We'd like to take some time to highlight these initiatives, while you provide some context on some of the projects. So first, Jeremy's going to walk us through what's happening in at Lane County Behavioral Health, and then we'll highlight some of the other initiatives that our community partners have happening.
At Lane County Behavioral Health, we're transforming services, developing a system with easy access to high-quality care. For the adults we serve, we've developed three teams based on the client's level of care. These new teams are access, acute services, and outpatient. Treatment will be delivered using a team model of integrated care, evidence-based practices, and community connection. The outcomes will be closely monitored using data and analytics to ensure we meet our goals for transformation. At LCBH, we received a Trillium grant to integrate physical and behavioral health care. We've done an excellent job implementing this grant and creating an integrated care team. These clients, under this grant, receive counseling, peer support, case management, nursing, psychiatry, primary care, and much more. LCBH recognizes that the future of behavioral health includes full integration with primary care. We've seen the amazing impact of integration, and we want all our clients to have this level of care in the future. Currently, we're increasing our connection to the community health center and building our capacity to see more integrated care clients, as much as our staffing level will allow.
Okay. I have three more improvements to share with you this morning. Because of the challenges that we've had with the residential treatment system, we see the improvements that we're making. I'm excited to let you know that in the residential system of care, we are creating manuals for both the foster home system and the residential system that will clarify roles and responsibilities for those facilities, as well as for us. We will be meeting monthly and providing the necessary trainings and implementing new policies and procedures to educate providers and improve the systems. We also are in the process of expanding our housing services to improve another facility for an additional 10 beds. The next improvement, you Commissioner Sorenson might be familiar with this, and I want to thank you for sending us that information about the stepping-up initiative. The jail diversion project was initiated approximately two years ago. The first year consisted of creating a summit meeting that included Lane County Mental Health, law enforcement, judges, attorneys, and treatment providers. Through that process, we identified a population that was not currently being served. The population that wasn't identified are people who are involved with the criminal justice system and have mental health needs. The second year, we wrote a grant and we received it, and now we're able to provide an array of services consisting of medication management, seeing a clinician, and patients attending an evidence-based support group called moral recognition therapy. And I think it's important to let you know what the word "recognition" means, because I often get that question. It means restoring the ability to make the right choice. Currently, we're serving about 120 people in that program. The final program I want to tell you about is the peer support services. This has been a phenomenal addition to our program. We've heard from clients and staff alike what an amazing addition this has been. Peer supports are able to fill a gap that has been missing for us for a very long time. If someone is struggling out in the community, they're able to go out, assist them with whatever their needs are. We have connection points, and this is a place in our building where peers and clients are able to meet together and build a relationship. Their peers are equal to these folks, and that's what makes the relationship work so well. They have experienced many of the issues that the people we are serving have experienced. And currently, we have four peer supports in our program, and we're getting ready to hire them.
So in addition to all that fantastic work that's happening at Lane County Behavioral Health, there are also a multitude of projects underway within our community with our community partners. They're each addressing the system in a very necessary and unique way. But to improve access, several organizations have moved to stay in favor of rapid access for mental health, addictions, and physical health services. Additionally, the Behavioral Health Consortium, the consortium of local providers, has banded together and created a central database where twice-weekly, we each input our current level of access and how people can get into their services. That way, if a client presents at an agency where they don't have any openings, they have this database they can go to, they can look and see where, who has openings that week, and how those can be accessed, and can provide more information to that individual, rather than just giving them a phone number and address and saying, "Go try this place for this place." To address crisis and housing concerns, both Royal Hill Center and South Lane Mental Health are expanding services and housing for ACT, assertive community treatment. And a subcommittee is also looking at making recommendations to Trillium and Lane County for crisis services. So since the closing of Royal Avenue, we've had a gap in crisis services, so we've had a team of people really examining what is needed in our community now, given the external changes in our environment with the implementation of the ACA, and we expect to issue an RFP within the next several weeks to get our gaps in our crisis services filled. To improve rural behavioral health access, Trillium has been using its rural advisory council to solicit information and recommendation on needs and gaps. Trillium has also recently issued an RFP for telemedicine opportunities. So this allows not only consult between primary care and behavioral health clinicians and psychiatrists, supporting those primary care physicians and seeing people with mental illness, also helps us outreach into our rural communities and provide another level of care for people that are having trouble accessing the mental health services. That concludes our presentation, and we now like to open it up for discussion and questions. Thank you very much.
On that National Association of Counties article, and the County News article, where they're attempting to make a connection between the number of people that are mentally ill that are in jail, and different ways of improving services to those people, keeping the community safe, and being efficient with public dollars. That's my version of it. And what is Lane County doing, if anything? And I've heard already a critique that, well, it's just a concept. It's just, there's a lot of mentally ill people in jail. The U.S. leads the world in the number of people in jail or in jail in prison. We're 5% of the world's population, but we're 20% of the world's incarcerated population. So we're, this NACO initiative is really just saying something that's obvious, but there isn't really a solution to it. So my question is, is this something that's percolating? Is this something that is happening? And what is it? What are we doing? Are we taking mentally ill people out of the jail? What are we doing?
Let me start, and then Carla turns it on, in the gaps. So I think Lane County, like many places nationally, really the mentally ill are represented in our jails, and we're really realizing that this is a huge issue. It's not helping those people, they're not getting the right level of treatment, and it's costing us a lot of money. So we're really lucky here. We have a great collaboration with our law enforcement partners. Last year, a little over a year ago, we received a grant to do what's called sequential intercept mapping. So we brought together multidisciplinary teams, law enforcement for its behavioral health providers, and we sat in a room for a full day and created a map looking at the intersections of where the mentally ill intersect with the criminal justice system. A number of gaps and needs were identified from that work. Since then, the Mental Health Summit, which is that same group of multidisciplinary people, have been looking at these gaps and forming a recommendation and movement to what we can do to improve in this area. So we've condensed the information, improved it, we've prioritized it, we've categorized it in different ways, such as what are things that are low in increase, so to speak, or low-cost initiatives that we could implement very easily to improve the system, on up to initiatives that will take resources, money, and time, and are developing those plans. So that work is happening. And then we also have, we also received a jail diversion grant, which is helping us divert people with mental illness out of the jail from the get-go, as well as regen most people are in the jail, and pull them out more quickly, and get them into treatment. So we have a mental health court here, we work very closely with Church Maury, and have a good system and good contacts to really start reversing that trend that we see on the national level. But again, it is a big problem, and something that's not going to resolve itself overnight, that we'll continue to work and work and focus on, and work with our law enforcement partners on. I think one of the greatest things that we have going here is that we have those collaborations and those connections already in place, so we can work together to resolve the problem, rather than trying to solve it individually in silos.
And just to tack on, so we are able to go into the jail. We have peer supports that go in and screen individuals that are in there. They can actually pick them up when they're released. They bring them over to Lane County Behavioral Health, they're able to see a clinician, get an appointment for a licensed medical professional, start building those connections, you know, and really develop a relationship, so that hope is that they'll continue to come back. And we're not only doing that with our local jail, but we're also doing it with the prison system. We've gotten a few referrals from Oregon State Prison, from OCI, so we're really looking at collaborating throughout the state of Oregon, not just here at the city.
Carla also mentioned the evidence-based practice that we're using.
Yeah, moral recognition.
I can't say it, she has to say it, don't worry. It's, you know, it's a great model, it's used by sponsors, really targeting these specific individuals, providing them a level of treatment that they need to help pull them out of that cycle, to get them out of that system of criminality, get them in the treatment that they need, and get them back to our community as productive members of society.
And I'd like to add also through the jail diversion grant, that we've been able to provide crisis intervention training, CAT training, with an evidence-based approach to support law enforcement officials to have a different response when we're facing somebody on the streets with some discomfort because of their mental health issues. And we've trained many law enforcement officers.
I don't know the number. There have been two law enforcement officer trainings, a dispatcher training is also the, we developed, but it's for metro area police, as well as Lane County Sheriff's Department of Municipal Districts.
What about Lane Transit District and bus drivers?
They have not been involved in the training, that's a great idea.
We've had a couple of incidents where mentally ill people get on Lane Transit District buses, and the passengers are upset about it, and so they call the police, 911, now the bus is being driven. The bus driver has got a lot of other responsibilities, like keeping the bus on the road. And I think that's a place where a lot of mentally ill people in our community intersect with some sort of authority figure, the bus driver. And, you know, in the emphasis on the training for LTD bus drivers, the emphasis is on the passenger's safety, how to operate the bus, how you pull it up, stop it, start it, unload it, blah, blah, blah. And yet, one of their big challenges is dealing with disruptive passengers, and unlike a lot of agencies, Lane Transit District's funding is not declining, and they actually have some budget for training, and their drivers are, and the operators are personally affected by all this. And so I just think that's, that's an area, I mean, obviously, police are the number-one area, but I think, I think other ways of thinking about how do mentally ill people access and interact with the government system, so, just an idea.
That's really a technical idea. I wrote it down. And I'm happy to report, as of Monday, we have been notified that that jail diversion funding will continue to go through our 1517 biennial.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Chair. So tomorrow will mark 17 years of our freshman student, freshman student, and freshman person at high school. I know we've put them in the rounds. Two kids were murdered, 26 landed, part of that, nine of the campus parents. So I'm just curious, on what's the interaction, maybe the schools, are you able to identify? Because it's pretty obvious that we're interviewing the process that we have a mental illness. And so how do you, how are you working, like, in conjunction with the schools and this type of thing? Because I think identifying at a younger age, it would be very helpful. So something like this, and thank God, something like this has not happened, again, at least here. And of course, since Columbine, Virginia Tech, and Aurora, a person isn't mentioned at all. And I don't want to say thank God, because it's unfortunate for those communities as well. So I think that there's, you know, I know we learned a lot from that time, and to University of Oregon, and so on and so forth, but I guess what we are today, are you still proactively working with the school districts and trying to identify the youth in those situations?
I think the short answer is yes. Today, we focused on the adult mental health system, so maybe I'll step in backup in age a little bit. Through the 2013 state legislative session, mental health investment fund, we also received funding for ESAP, Early Assessment and Support Alliance funding. That's a program of Peace Health's youth behavioral health section. It works with transition-age youth, 14 and 25, who are just starting to emerge with psychotic symptoms. Serious mental illness often will start emerging during that timeframe, and this is an opportunity to quickly give them their wraparound services for that young person, their family, their support systems, so they can stay on a healthy trajectory for their life. They work closely with the schools, they do a lot of outreach and information with school staff, teachers, counselors, administrators, secretaries, bus drivers, school districts. Peace Health directly also received funding for young adult talent. So for young people in that 12- to 21-year range, who maybe aren't meeting the criteria for ESAP, which is a serious mental illness, psychotic person episode, but are studying to show some mental health and substance abuse testers in behavior, again, gap services around the young person, their family, and their support systems, and help them move towards a healthy life trajectory. A lot of work with schools, a lot of work with community groups. We also have just recently been working with the school districts on other mental health funding to provide mental health services in the school-based health centers. I think you may know that Springfield High School in particular was recently recertified as a school-based health center. So our application this year will seek to increase the dollars that come to Lane County so that mental health services can be on-site in that school-based health center. Trillium is working with the system of care wraparound services, and that steering committee is not only working to provide better wraparound services for young kids who have serious issues, mental health, family dysfunction, serious issues, and multiple involvement with systems, but also they continue looking at the gaps. What do we need to increase in the community in terms of day treatment services, in terms of support to schools, in terms of support to families, and then what do we need to do for those gaps? Lane County Public Health Prevention Team has been working to support mental health promotion and prevention efforts, even earlier in the continuum of mental health needs. All of us have hard days. Right now, it's Mental Health Awareness Month. I hope you've seen the PSAs from Mind Your Mind. What's in your mental health first aid kit? You have your first aid kit for your physical health. What do you do to take care of yourself when stressful things are happening, regardless of the diagnosis you may or may not have? Prevention Team has been working with NAMI National Alliance for the Mentally Ill to provide mental health first aid training for community members, school staff, other entities in our community. That's an evidence-based project that helps you identify somebody who's stressed, connect with them, and help them connect to the services they need. And there's more, but I'll stop because this is like, I want to talk to you.
You're in a great job.
So thank you for that question. So thank you for that question.
Well, you know, I, I live out there still, and I drive by that memorial each and every day, so you see it, so it's just a reminder, and besides the fact that obviously, my sister-in-law works, worked at, and still works at First High School in that time, nieces and nephews attended there during that time, and it just affected, not just Springfield, I think it affected this entire community pretty significantly, and so it's, it's a reminder that's there. As you can see, May 21st is just the day that I remember, and it's hard to forget.
I absolutely remember where I was that moment, that time I worked for the Looking Velocity Rose Program, and the supervisor of the shelter program, and I was doing a training with dispatch officers on how to access services in that moment through MP. So I remember having to remember where I was too. Thank you.
Mr. Stewart. Thanks, Mr. Chair. Lisa and Seth, thank you for the presentations, very, very helpful, and appreciate the information. You know, I can remember back when we were working on the 97 and the community care, kind of headed down that path, and we talked about the struggle, but that time I was representing the ESCC, and really shared with folks, and shared with the committee and staff, that we're struggling to find ways to provide mental health services, the folks in the ranks, and so, I mean, great job, the grant, and the coordination, and I really appreciate the hard work on that. I wanted to share with you, as a permanent chair and a member of the board for Elkhart, I've had discussions with Brenda Wilson, the director, that they're seeing, and they're seeing, as you said, the services, there are some very alarming increases in mental health needs, and they're struggling to figure out how to bind that. So you may already be in touch with Brenda, but I wanted to share with you that if you're not, it might be really good to reach out to her and kind of find out what she's experiencing, and if there's a way to get grants, if there's a way to suggest provision of services, but something that her staffers, the classer, help them, seniors, and staff folks, that are really struggling with, because they're not professionals enough, you know, it might also be a training opportunity, and Brenda believes it's important to train these folks, because they're really struggling to help people, and alarm that to be a increase in the number of services.
Thank you, I, I will reach out, and that is something that we're seeing statewide and national level, that older adult population really struggling with mental health issues. Recently, the state recognition of this has issued some monies, so we can hire two full-time FTEs specifically for the older adult population in the mental health system. So we're recruiting these positions right now, there's trainings lined up, and coordination with the state, at looking at what are the needs, what are the gaps, what training do people need, knowing that there's a lack of training, kind of looking at that whole breadth of services there, and what we would improve in that area. So there are some things in the work that absolutely I think working with Brenda, and is specifically to our community, hopefully, so we can do a little help.
Perfect, I appreciate that. And then Lisa, the last time, I think, probably wasn't the last time I saw you, but you gave a presentation at the ESCC, probably last time I was in this, and you shared with, with the group, some struggles that you were facing with staffing, some changes, and actually trying to hire folks, I was just curious, so as we sit here today, how is the staffing, are you still searching for staff?
We are, we are, and, you know, we have been, so at Land County Behavioral Health, we've been without a manager for some time, and we have had some recent applicants, and actually have second, final round interviews scheduled for next week, so I'm hopeful to fill that gap. We've also been able to fill our other vacant supervisory positions. Where we're really continuing to struggle is two areas, one with our psychiatrists, so much like with primary care, we are really having a hard time recruiting psychiatrists to our area. You know, it's, it's hard to draw people in, it's hard to, when they get here, to get them full-time, and, you know, we're competing with Peace Health, we're competing with the state hospital now, we recently lost one of our psychiatrists to the state hospital, so that's going to be an ongoing battle. We've also currently had several clinical vacancies with our clinicians, that's mainly due to having a number of staff that are ready to retirement, or moving on to that stage of their life, so we have some gaps going there as well. So we seem to, you know, take two steps forward, one step back, and I think some progress, not as much as we hope.
As far as the challenges that you try to fill those positions, do you, do you share, do you think maybe it's just a, a lack of professionals available, people searching for jobs, or I think we talked about it in the past, where we try to address it at some level, actually salaries and some of those, combination?
I, I think it is a combination, I, I think the driving factor is really just kind of having the avenue to bring those types of professionals to our area, you don't have a residency program, so, you know, getting psychiatrists in community, in these, in these entities has, has been very difficult. There's been some discussion with the consortium of behavioral providers, and how can we work together, because everyone's kind of realizing the same issues, so how can we work together to bring people in, and work with Trillium, and, you know, bring professionals in from the outside and not essentially be scaling them from one another, and thus not really improving our total system. So looking at how we can, you know, what kind of equipment opportunities can we maybe go in on, trying to fill in that area.
So I just want to fill in that, I appreciate that question, because it, I was going to point out that you don't see a manager sitting around this table, and so I don't know, if we keep our fingers crossed, we're hoping that we will have that position filled, it's very hard for Lisa to fill it, both, and Mary Jant, who's been stepping into that position. So when we look at recruitment, it absolutely, we're looking at that opportunity for residency program for those medical professionals and psychiatrists, for our managers and supervisors, we have had an issue with the salary, and we've done everything we can, we've gotten very creative in our recruitment through all our positions. It is, you know, it's a unique skill that you're looking for, and, and so, and we, and we want to make sure we get the right people in those positions. So we, we haven't settled, we've waited, we've really done our best to do that recruitment, and we'll continue to do that, because that's where the talent and the skill and the success comes with it, our employees, so we want to make sure we get the right people in there. So I appreciate the question, and we are down two managers, but we have interviews next week, so wish us luck.
You mentioned it, Lisa, I was hoping that maybe you could point out with the new statement on that, because I was curious, it sounds like it's already kind of impacted you by, you know, creating an issue with employment, but do you see any benefits that might be, that we would see in our connection?
Yes.
That you can help me provide services?
Yes, so there's, there's some benefits, there's some drawbacks outside of the employment piece, so the, on the benefit side, you know, the proximity really allows for a very close collaboration. So right now, we have staff that are being weekly with the Oregon State Hospital, kind of doing standard appointments and check-ins, really making sure that information is being exchanged, so we can be moving people out of the hospitals as possible, and getting them back into the community as appropriate. So there's some real positive work going on there. On the negative side, the hospital already has a very long wait list, and because the hospital is now in Orange County, it's our identified hospital, so before, we didn't have a hospital in our county, we could access the different hospital systems, we can't do that anymore, we have to, we have to use the JCP hospital, so that has created a little bit of a barrier. We essentially can't get new folks in until we discharge some of our folks out, you know, and that timing isn't always aligned, some people need to be in the hospital longer, or they're ready to come out, but there isn't appropriate placement for them in the community, so, you know, kind of every step of the way, there are challenges with that.
Is identified hospital rule, is that a state law, or is that federal regulation?
It could be in state, yes.
So we can talk this out, or somebody about that?
Yes, absolutely.
I wanted to ask about the, it's pretty key, there's three critical, I guess, we have the state, we have a county, and we have Trillium, and I was just curious, I'm assuming that communication is, I mean, is critical, and it's hopefully meeting your satisfaction in that area, that, and I asked that because I've experienced in the past where I sat in on a meeting where it was evident that clearly some of our communications built like a hospital were challenged a little bit, so I'm curious, do you find some barriers or some issues that you're dealing with, trying to manage that communication and being able to really, I guess, mesh and work together?
You know, I think there, there always tends to be a certain level of barriers with communication, but I do think that we are really lucky and very well situated in Land County. We have a great relationship with Trillium, and how that was set up works very well for us, with TBHV, and Division of Health and Human Services, that just lends to communication and coordination, so that relationship is very strong. We have a great partnership with the state, you know, with the situation we're here in the center, we're working very closely with them, really push the process forward so we can get that service back up and running as soon as possible, so that's been extremely positive. Of course, we have our county commissioners, that we have great relationships with and advocate for us as needed, so I think that we have a very good system of communication here. You know, it's not without its challenges, it's not perfect, but I feel very positive about it.
So you wanted to kind of touch also on that relationship with Trillium, and, you know, we have Trillium Behavioral Health, which is a county, a division within Health and Human Services, and actually, we have, we didn't get the introduction over here, so if you want to go ahead and just do a quick introduction.
My name's Erin Russell, I'm program supervisor at Trillium Behavioral Health.
So if you have any Trillium questions, she didn't sit at the table. Erin would be happy, and she's now kicking Bruce for being on vacation, but we, obviously, we are, people are envious of our relationship and how the county has worked with our CCO, and continues to work with our CCO in such a positive way, particularly, you know, the commitment from Trillium towards Land County Behavioral Health. So if you have any questions, Erin's here, I just wanted to make sure, got introduced.
I got two more, I'll, I guess, but it's similar. So the next question is, as I mentioned, the Mental Health Advisory Committee, and some of the situations that I've personally dealt with as a commissioner, or specific constituents, we talked about possibly using the Mental Health Advisory Committee to, after the fact, kind of review, you know, whether it could be a reassignment, or some of the issues that we deal with. And it sounded like the advisory committee was wanting, wanting to do that?
Yes.
Or you want to have possibly setting up a, a structure that, that they may actually do with, you know, how, how situations are going?
Yes, absolutely, so we've done a review with the, the larger committee, which is, it includes mental health and TD combined, and then we've also instituted a TB subcommittee looking at specific issues, development of disabilities, and so some of the recent concerns have been reviewed with those committees, and will continue as we go forward, and so it's a great feeling, we get feedback from our community members and consumers around issues that are happening, and so we are moving on that absolutely, and I appreciate that.
And then my final question was, is more specific around the hearing, and so, and I know we have roles for state and county and different, and we follow that, I get that out of account for that. But my, my question is, is that is there any value maybe in us looking at that situation around, could there be some policy changes or change to, towards state regulation changes that may reduce the impact for, for some of those, and I just question, take for instance, and I don't know if it's even particularly possible, but instead of in situations where we had to uproot those folks, finding a new place to go, would it, or was it possible maybe to review policy, instead of uprooting the patients, maybe it would be better to insert some management staff, and have them kind of control the situation, get it stabilized, people's satisfaction when and when, kind of role, maybe if it's a provider change, or if it's a staff change, or something? Because my experience with these individuals, with mental health individuals, is that they're really fragile, in a lot of cases, and any type of situation creates stress or, or that can set them back, and we saw in this instance where it was also the impact of family and business support system, so I throw that out there, maybe not for an answer, but maybe just a little challenge, that I know personally in the board, maybe we had to go to testify and, you know, we'll make the process or something, and or present a possibility that maybe we should work at approaches on how we deal with these situations.
Absolutely, and that's something that we would coordinate with the state on, I understand where you're coming from, there were certainly some challenges and difficulties that are at the heart for people in those circumstances to deal with. I, I would like to tell you that the residents that were removed from here in center, all but born, that returned to Land County, so they found placements for them here, the one individual that's remaining outside of the county, it's a perfect, she, she needs to stabilize, and, and her choice, and wanting to stay at the facility that she's at, they got more work in to get her into her backup of mental health as possible, but I appreciate your thinking about helping, helping the healthcare department, but that has to happen in the future.
And I'm not saying it's wrong, the process, but I'm just challenging, maybe we could look at some other possibilities to try to move this into that. Thank you very much.
I have a couple of questions myself. Yesterday, Captain Buckwell came before the board, took a contract for the new mental services, not for the jail, and part of what he talked about was that it could include some cognitive based treatment, and the ability to have that wraparound with other services, including a lot of the agencies that involve the ESCC, that are also particularly happening, either other sponsors or, or probation. Can you talk a little bit about how Land County Mental Health interacts with that contract, and those, and also the agencies that are involved in the ESCC, some of them are not in the county, and how that, we try and, you know, have folks that are coming into the jail, and we find out they have a mental health issue, and how that kind of wraps around and tracks with the patient, and keeps them, you know, in the system, keeps that, you know, what gets started in the jail moving ahead to various agencies?
Yes, so we talked a little bit about the collaboration between the county corrections and, and ourselves, and I should include their, their healthcare provider in that, so we have worked with, had some requests on the selection of the new vendors, so Dr. Lakey sat on the selection committee and was a part of that process, I've talked to him several times about it, with our jail diversion work, and work with the methadone treatment program, and we're very closely with their healthcare staff, to make sure that the level of treatment necessary is being provided, and then through the jail diversion work and other work with that department, we're looking at ways to do warm handoffs, so to speak, so if people come out of jail, they're given information, and even if possible, taken to Land County Behavioral Health, so they can quickly and immediately get into those services and continue the treatment that they started at the jail, so there's not a lag in them obtaining their medications, to make them sure when they leave, leave the jail, they have enough meds to sustain them, get them into have enough meds to sustain them, get them into a psychiatrist immediately so those can be renewed, um, as well as the other treatments, the cognitive behavioral therapy or other components that they're receiving. Um, so we're really collaborating to, to make that a smooth transition for people as much as we can. Of course, it's still a work in progress, but, um, we have a focus for that. And we, um, meet with them monthly to talk about where we're at with things, what we need to improve upon. Um, you know, we talked about getting methadone treatment into the jail for pregnant women, helping them with that, um, STD testing for inmates in the jail, um, impacting, um, those areas. Um, so there's a, a lot of work in coordination, but, um...
Excellent. Thank you. So my final question kind of stems on, on last night's collection results. Um, we have, you know, employees that's going to be dealing with a pretty stressful situation. Just the, the what's in your mind, um, campaign kind of brings to mind. So are we, are, are you all coordinating with HR maybe and our employee assistance program to help, you know, keep our own folks mentally healthy here and particularly the ones that are going to be dealing with loss of their employment, um, here in the near future?
Absolutely. Um, but I can speak specifically for Health and Human Services and, and Behavioral Health. Um, you know, we access the EP program for a number of, of different needs. Um, and additionally, some of the transformation work that you really talked about that's happening at Lane County Behavioral Health. Um, it's, it's a recovery model with a huge wellness focus. And that wellness focus is not only for the clients that we serve, but for the staff that are providing those services. It's a very stressful and a hard job to do. Uh, you know, you see a, a lot of things that are difficult. So really making sure that staff are supported on, on many different levels, whether it's in the clinic, um, like at a quiet room to go to, or, you know, some yoga and some meditation, um, or whether it is through the EAP. Um, speaking of beyond Health and Human Services, um, I'm sure...
So I, I'm, so appreciate the question because, um, you know, having 29 years in here at the county, I certainly have experienced the ups and downs and the loss of staff. So I think it's a very good question and, and we talk about the mind your mind. And so we will, I'll check in with Marcia because I also feel I need to check in with her around our workforce piece, uh, because we will have a number of people who will be, um, leaving the county employment and looking for employment. And we need to be able to support them as well, uh, through, through that work we do around workforce. And that certainly has happened in the past with county. I appreciate the question.
I just want to respond to that, and hopefully I'm responding correctly. In the past, um, we've been in situations of, um, experience of, you know, speaking for health or employees, we've had diversion services that was provided, um, to help with our, to HR department. If I recall, um, we just changed that, since the provider came in for a presentation.
Budgets and everything.
But we, but she, um, Marcia had shared that we are changing providers. So I'm sure that that's going to work and that we're sort of helping with this situation.
We're, we're meeting today. Uh, we've planned a meeting with our staff between HR and local works. We have it this afternoon to reconcile the results of yesterday and the plan for the actions that have to happen to make sure that we have appropriate services provided to our employees who are impacted. So we want to follow up and address that up. It's my question.
Thank you. I appreciate knowing this. We're thinking about that for a while. Any other questions for staff or that presentation?
What, uh, big picture initiatives, um, if you, uh, had the power to do this, would you be, uh, suggesting in terms of, of expanding the, um, money, local money specifically that will be used, uh, to, um, cope with this very large underserved mental health need? And, uh, you know, uh, this isn't the best day of the 365 days of this year to be, for us to act on that proposal, but I would like to, uh, in, in the spirit of, of inviting some creativity, uh, of, of what other communities might be doing to cope with this large number of people. And I, you know, I hear these statistics, half of all visits to, to physical health providers are because of mental health problems. Uh, there are lots of mentally ill people in jail. There are lots of mentally ill people that can't get in to see counselors or mental health therapists or even, uh, or, or psychologists or psychiatrists. There's a big, you know, there's, there's bottlenecks and there's big problems. And one way to solve those problems may, with emphasis on may, may be that federal funding, state funding, and local funding could be increased. And we could get more providers and we could deal with these backlogs placing people into these jobs by offering the competitive salaries. And it all comes back to money. And it's the last thing today that I intend on dealing with. But I would like to invite the creativity of, well, are there other communities who are struggling with these same statistics, these same problems? And are they coming up with ideas that their political leadership and their voters are willing to accept and say, yeah, that, yeah, it's a problem and we're going to step up and try to fix it? So I'm just curious whether you have any success stories out there, um, where, uh, a local community or a city or a county subdivision of a state says, yeah, this is a big problem. And, you know, we don't like it that, that our jail is full of mentally ill people who keep coming back. It costs us a lot of money, doesn't increase public safety at all. And, uh, we know that our medical providers, our nurses, our doctors, our, our, our physical health, you know, public, private establishment is coping with huge influx of patients. And we don't want all these people with mental problems jamming up the physical health system. So is there some, um, some creativity out here that may exist outside of Lane County or even right here at the table where you guys have some, maybe not silver bullet, but, you know, like cobalt or some, some kind of other bullet that would, that would help us? So I just want to kick that off as far as being creative and what is working.
Can I take a shot at this?
And by the way, Spokane County, uh, was one that Stephen Elle mentioned a few years ago, a social service, uh, Jackson County, Oregon did a social service levy. Uh, you know, they may be time dated in my mind, but there are some successes in the Northwest.
So I appreciate not talking about, uh, money in terms of going to the voters. But remember that, uh, at Behavioral Health, uh, it's not a zero sum game. The more people we see, the more people we can bill for. The more staff we have on, the more people we can see, the more people we can bill for. And there's a huge need in our community. So we aren't, uh, creating, uh, trying to create a need. The need is there. So we want to get that perfect balance. To that end, when you think about creativity, can't help but think about the Denver model and what's going on in Denver. Uh, we've visited there and actually patterned, uh, these changes in our adult program around that, that Denver model. So I appreciate it. We are on that creative bent. We are on that, uh, trajectory, if you will. And, you know, I'm hoping our goal is that people say, look what they did in Lane County. Uh, but we are in that shifting time. So we're, as with any, as with any change, um, we're dealing with the, the issues that come up with change. So I don't know if that helps, Commissioner, answer your question.
What about, uh, local government initiatives to deal with the problem of the backlog of, of physical health visits and making appointments for people, for doctors and nurses? Uh, you've got this huge influx of people that have insurance, but we haven't had a commensurate increase in the number of medical providers. And, and therefore there's this even bigger problem because now you have people trying to get in to see, uh, physical health ma- uh, people, doctors, nurses, uh, various people who help them. But on top of that, you have the ordinary problem, you know, that we're just not solving. And that is that so many people with mental health problems are going into the physical health system because they either don't know where else to go, they're embarrassed to go, uh, they don't have any other options, and they don't know they have other options.
You take your line, Commissioner.
Um, I'd certainly can start. So, you know, Trillium has, and maybe Erin can speak a little bit to this, um, you know, has really been focusing and pushing a collaborative medical home model. Um, so, you know, those supports are built in on either side for both physical and mental health supports.
Erin, if you want to come up to the table.
Yeah, please come up to the table where the mic's picked up.
And you could be on TV. Oh, sorry. That probably wasn't very helpful, was it?
So with our, um, integrated medical homes, something Trillium, um, is going to con- likely continue to fund is, um, just the non-billable care coordination time that's required for doctors to be able to consult with behavioral health providers and with psychiatrists. And so they found, um, the primary care medical homes have behavioral health consultants embedded as, as very effective and very useful. There's, um, pediatric clinics, um, and adult clinics, but, um, if anything, are saying we need more of this. Um, and it's really improving the quality of care. I think an area where Trillium is, um, uh, maybe benefited from some advocacy from, um, kind of county and local government entities is around psychiatric consultation for the medical homes. Um, right now, the state of Oregon supports Opal K, which is an eight to five, Monday through Friday psychiatric consult line with two, um, board certified child psychiatrists for pediatric clinics around the state. Um, initial information we're receiving is even the pediatric clinics are under utilizing that service, but that's not available for adult, uh, medical providers. Um, there's a large, um, clinical advisory panel that has a number of doctors, um, on it. That's a Trillium committee. Um, and they, um, have focused on a few other areas. But I think there's an opportunity to, um, kind of put, you know, the, the mental health needs and the mental health impact, you know, in medical clinics, you know, at that group's table, um, with some support from, um, Behavioral Health and, and, um, you know, possibly this group to, to advocate for psychiatric consult. Because you're right, the doctors aren't comfortable with it and they're very overwhelmed by it. Um, and, and they don't feel like they're meeting, you know, the community's needs right now.
And I can just speak to the transformation project, Happy Health. So one of the things we can all be very proud of is the creativity. And we really targeted solutions that are budget neutral. We haven't asked for more funds. We're really looking at how we maximize the staff we have, how we increase more access to the community. On average, the adult team serves about 850 people at any given time. And we'd like to see it up to a thousand or more. And one of the ways we're doing that is historically, this traditional outpatient clinic where services are one-to-one. So you come in, you see a psychiatrist one-to-one, you see your physician one-to-one, which works for a lot of people, but it's, it's very costly. So what we're looking at right now is increasing our access through group interventions, um, through shared medical appointments, um, through doing more community-based activities and really creating a more diverse approach to our, um, clinical work. And what we're seeing just in the beginning stages of that right now, we're starting to be in the black financially. Last month was a really good month for us. And so we're balancing the fiscal responsibility with the clinical responsibility. And we're finding over the last six months of really hard work of creativity transformed that we're right on the beginning stages of taking that one-to-one care and creating these team-based cares where clients will be able to be seen, but maybe it'll be seen by a peer. And many times, seeing some of them are ancillary staff can be even better than seeing a one-to-one because sometimes it's just an urgent issue around housing. Well, they can go to a peer and get some consultation about an advocacy for housing or, or through resources. So we're really seeing really great curve and increase and thankful that it's also lining up with the financial part. And we recognize that it's, you know, a day-to-day, week-to-week, month-to-month monitoring and balance between, um, fiscal and the clinical. Um, I, I believe this, I project manage the transformation that it'll be a very different clinic over the next six to 12 months. And we're already seeing other folks come ask us about what we're doing in transformation. And people are really proud that the amount of work we've done in such a period of time with very little resource is having changed that it is. So, um, and seeing that our care is more of a continuum because we have the Child, Childhood Adolescent Program targeting adverse childhood events and putting as much as resource we can into early intervention and seeing our treatment as a continuum. So we can do as much as we can to help the children heal and then, you know, and also equally for the adults and, um, keep investing our resources and be really agile. I think that's one of the biggest differences that I've seen in the last few years is that we're much more quick to make changes and respond to needs, both when there's challenges and also when we see there's something we need to change from an improvement side. Um, so I think we're doing a really good job. And any kind of additional funding or grants we get for this enhance that. And it's a really exciting time to be, you know.
You know, um, the other day, uh, my wife dressed up in a red, white, and blue outfit, not by, uh, enough on purpose, but pointed out that it was very patriotic and that, uh, that those colors, red, white, and blue are, are, are national colors, but they're also the national colors of, um, Great Britain and France and other countries. And I wondered if she had any particular nationality in mind. She had none in mind. But it occurred to me that, you know, in, in, in some of those countries, France in particular, there's a federal system. And there's not a local school district. There's not a Southern Oregon University Board of Trustees. There's not a Lane County Board of Commissioners. There's the government of France, okay? And I understand they also have cities. But other than that, they really don't have any other states or all these other governments. And what occurred to me was, okay, our country's based upon, among other things, the idea that maybe we should have a division of power. And it shouldn't all be centered in one government. So we have 3,000 counties and in Oregon, we have, you know, 200 cities and whatever. So we have lots of different governments. Uh, there's a book on New York City called The Land of 10,000 Governments. They, they actually list it in the tri-state, you know, how many governments there are. Well, what has this got to do with my question? The answer is, the Board of Commissioners yesterday continued something that had been tried and started a couple of years ago. And that is to have, uh, a privatized system for the physical health, food, and, uh, mental health at the jail. And this reversed a multi-year system. And without delving into all the detail of that, uh, such as the three-to-one vote to approve it, I will say, one of my questions was, if the private healthcare provider that will be starting, if they're providing mental health services to these jail inmates and they kind of come in a revolving door three, four days, a week, two weeks, they are seen for mental health purposes there, then what happens? Is there some, uh, efficiency in that these folks will be specialized? That's the upside. They'll be specialized? Or is there some inefficiency in that after they get interviewed in the jail and their mental health problems are dealt with and then they're sent out of jail, then who takes over after that? And isn't that a inefficient model? It would be better to, like, get them with their team when they're in and their team stays with them. But I'm just asking, what is going to, now, now that we have this new system that's coming online, what is going to happen to us?
Certainly the, the, you know, the continuity of services with a provider is, is very important. And, um, with lack of that, what we can do and what we are doing is coordinating with the jail and that system. So when people leave the jail, um, they're, they're getting a warm handoff and coming right into treatment. So there's not a gap in their treatment or in their medications. Um, Carla was talking about the jail diversions, actively pulling people out of the jail or diverting them from the jail altogether and getting them in treatment rather than, you know, throwing them in a cell and thinking that's going to solve everything.
But we are apparently under this contract. We are going to, they are going to receive mental health services.
Yes.
So we are not anticipating that they're going to be providing mental health services by somebody else. We are paying for that in the contracts. My, my question is, how, how do they get re-interviewed? Or do those people from the, from the contract and agency do they then go with the inmate to some off-site facility to quote, have a warm handoff? Uh, what's going to happen?
Well, I think it'll be really important that we have a lot of communication with whatever entity that is, and that we're continuing the collaboration and the connection so that we're still doing in-reach. We're still meeting with the individual, maybe their mental health team in, in the facility, and then be able to have them and take them once they, this term, or once they leave.
Probably avoid duplication if you're going to have people go into the jail, meet with mental health providers that are in the jail.
Well, when they go into the jail, it's less about providing treatment and more around that communication collaboration and the planning. that communication, collaboration, and the planning for when the person leaves the jail. So getting that information ahead of time before they're let out on, you know, what medications are, what treatments are they receiving, what are their needs, where do they need to go when they get out, and then being able to plan for that. And so the second they walk out of that, the door of the jail, that plan is in place, and they've got an appointment, they know where they need to go and how to get there, maybe someone to get them there. So while the staff, medical staff in the jails are going with them in that, or doing a best to collaborate and plan, so there is a continuity of care, but it would be with different providers.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Lightman?
Thank you. So real quick question, is Trillium in this situation important?
Trillium is, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
All right.
Commissioner Stewart? Thanks, Ms. Lightman. So I just wanted to point out one thing in that asked a question. So just a reminder, though I think a program that we've invested in, that's been incredibly successful, is going to South Lake, Ohio. And we, just, just, they applied for a grant, and I believe we gave them $100,000, which helped them cap funding, drive, that helped them to essentially double the size of space to do it. And also led to, I think, over 50 employees in South Lake, Ohio, and part of the outreach and the patients. So that simple, you know, a simple grant that we approved has had a ton of implications out here, so I want to talk about highlighting their success. And then my last question, provided that the board, I know this isn't an agenda items review, but I found this to be a very valuable, I, you know, very valuable time spent today in understanding that we're really, or, sorry, I'm over headed to attending this other program. I'm wondering, Alicia, could we do the same thing with developmental disability?
We would be happy to.
Because they're a...
If that's what you would like.
Key component in our building, and quite frankly, we say hi to each other in the hall, but I think it would be wonderful if my colleagues agree that in the near future we establish more sessions than that.
And I do want to point out, not only they're in your building and you get to see them, but they're also doing transformation. They are also, with the coming of the K Plan and that more community-focused and increasing in size, depending on what the legislature does. So there's some real shifts happening in developmental disabilities, and be a great time to come and talk about those. So if it's okay, I'll just wait to hear from the county administrator about what that would be.
I think that's a great idea, because, you know, I heard about their possible expansion, not through Health and Human Services, but by sitting on the facilities committee and understanding that they were going to need more space in the building.
Yeah. True, yeah.
So it's probably great to have, have worked, because that's probably, you know, another one of the...
Probably because you didn't understand about what we were doing, just the space we needed, so.
Yeah, yeah. I know you need space, but I have no idea why, so it would break down into ten.
That would be perfect. Thank you.
So I thought I saw at least three head nods here with Commissioner Lightman and Commissioner Stewart and myself, that, you know, we'll work with the administrator and agenda team to see what time or work has for staff to come back.
And I wouldn't wait and see what happens, so it would probably be after July, once we see where we are with the K Plan, if that's okay.
Yes.
Okay?
Great. And I echo Commissioner Stewart's thoughts, that this was really useful to hear from everybody, have the group here together, including somebody from Trillium, to address some of the issues. Interesting about the transformation, working towards less one-on-one, and also really appreciate the staff's time. Are there any further questions on, for staff today? If not, I will adjourn this meeting of the Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.